July 12th. That had over four.
Yeah.
About four AM. In the hottest month we've had. We believe, but regular meeting, Commission Court Liberty County, this court's meeting. Ready to show all the commissioners here today. And we do have plenty to take care of. So if y'all would all rise, leave. Leave, yeah, leave us. I'll get the pledges, okay? Space record flag. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. To the states of America. To the republic which stands my nation under God indivisible, in the spirit of justice and justice for all.
End of those beautiful state flagging that's this.
Army, United States, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let me have the leaders' dedication this morning, please.
Yes. Lord, we appreciate you and everything that you do, Father. We love you and we thank you for all the blessings that you bless us counting with fire. We ask that you continue to be with this court and give them wisdom and all the things that they have to do today and lead this community, Father, the way that you want us to go. Be with us in everything that we do, Father, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Ready. Notices and proclamations. I don't know if y'all noticed or not, but I have noticed. Y'all noticed the new, the new looking cannon we had out front?
Yeah.
Chairman gives a quick report. Man, I know you, you in chief and captain, we're working on that quite a bit with our, our Eagle Scout buddy, Luke.
Yes. Thank y'all for approving that. That guy did an awesome job.
Yes, he did.
He did. That's the bestest look that I can remember.
Yeah.
I don't know, last time we got paint job, it might have been around World War II. Anyway, and I've been corrected. That's how it's, it's not a cannon. Is that correct? The army buddies over here.
Yeah.
Air Force and Army. Yeah. Yeah. All righty. Any public comments I had received this morning? Any conflicts of interest? Anybody? All right, let's look at the consent agenda. Angela, we have the add-ons to the morning.
I do. I have two add-ons. Most for the everybody's money share stock there. It is an increase in capital outlay. The differences from the livestock and it is fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. I have another one that is recording the donation precinct three is an increase in capital outlay of five thousand dollars and then increase in other operating habits of five thousand dollars.
Along with the additions, some amendments.
I have an add-on.
You do? Okay.
I do. Rarely, but today I can. We had the patient center outcomes research fee that are known as the Pecori fee or the Felling Button fee. And it is the Obamacare tax that was applied for our insurance coverage. And the total cost of that is one thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty bucks cents. It's due about July 31st. And we pay that on the month, so. Annual fee.
Well, y'all reasons.
Internal revenue service, yes.
There you go. All right. Do you have considerations?
Addition, some amendments.
Senator, end up. Here. Ready. Say approve the additions. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, the regular number eight dash one for apparel, consider approved the contract for multiple submissions corporate construction radio tower base proposal previously approved by Commission Court June the 14th, 2022. Matthew, we discussed this. You have a concern about contract?
We do not.
Everybody's good.
Everybody's good, yeah. We, we reviewed it and not seen the issue.
Okay, the motion. We're approved.
Thank you.
Motion good, say Leon to approve. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number two, Mr. C, acknowledge and accept payment and performance bonds from dishes, say Washburn.
Correct.
Construction, not Vulcan.
No, it is Vulcan.
No.
Yeah.
Yes, it is Vulcan.
No.
Performance bond. Vulcan couldn't handle this and Vulcan is taking care of five roads for me.
Yeah, but I've done lots of ways.
Okay, well, they could, we could add Washburn on.
Yeah.
It says Waller. I think Waller, they mean Washburn.
Yes.
Yeah, there's Washburn.
Okay, let's get the corrections here.
It's just gonna be whatever, you know, we need to look up bid 20212, whichever ones we awarded on that.
Waiting on the bonds from Washburn to get started, so. Supposed to be it.
I know that this, you're still waiting on your bonds?
Well, is it? Should be it here.
I've already got the bonds issued for Vulcan to start my roads. This is what originally this was for.
Were both y'all's roads included in the same request for business?
We don't know that.
Yeah, that might be a person question then.
Apparel's not here. Okay.
But I'm pretty sure the wording should have been Waller. I mean.
I think Stephanie is calling. I think she went to a fixed direction. Do you want to know where you get on this?
Yes, please.
Table it for a moment or take it out of the room, see if she calls in.
Yeah, she was trying. She, she did text me and say it spoke Vulcan. It says Washburn.
Yeah, Vulcan and Washburn. I think the wording just needs to take this to Vulcan construction material and Washburn asphalt company. Just a misprint.
Look, Matthew.
Yeah, I'm digging. See if I can find it. It's eight point two, right?
Yes, sir. The bid was approved in earlier court, yes.
Yes.
This didn't get. Right now.
Saying Vulcan and Washburn.
Yeah, because Waller County doesn't even, wouldn't even have a, any bid on this.
It, it's a bag. It's Vulcan and Washburn.
So there.
Yes.
Vulcan and Washburn. Wasn't this print?
Oh. Washburn construction materials and Vulcan asphalt?
Yeah.
Not Water County.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get that corrected.
Make a motion with correction Washburn asphalt.
Thank you.
Motion Bruce, say, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. At motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number three, consider approved purchase of two vehicles with equipment and upfitting from Lake Tetry Chevrolet through tip stock track. Number twenty-one zero nine zero seven, about one hundred twenty-five thousand. Fifty-seven dollars seventy-four cents for the shares offered to be paid by fourth future funds. It's two things. Any questions?
We're approved.
Motion Greg, second, approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number four, for Mr. C, consider approved and signed contract utilization of HJC contract number HP zero eight dash two five for all hazards prepared this planning consulting and recovery services with Tetra Tech offering effective through July 31st, 2023. That is for a brief.
Yes, we are. I thought, I thought it was completed, but we are, just some very minor changes. We're still waiting to get an intended from Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech on. So we're going to table this one last time. I'm sure.
Motion Leon, say David table. We got the twenty eighth. We could get it taken care of. That's.
Yes.
Before kicks in, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number five, Mr. C, sooner approved purchase or lease of new ownership for Orton Billy Trimark. Purchase price, four thousand seven nine dollars sixty-two cents. Or leasing for two hundred thirty dollars a month, thirty-six bucks.
This price is gonna change. They didn't have the, with the bin itself, since the size machine won't fit in the bin, it's about thousand two hundred twenty-nine eight six. I would suggest that we bought by this outright instead of leasing it. Leasing it is gonna be about nine thousand dollars for three years versus the five thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars. Most of these ice machines have a life expectancy. We have to start working on them for about four to five years. So.
So the fifty-two hundred forty-nine dollars is gonna fit in the spot?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Court's pleasure.
Who the repurchase the ice machine? Second.
Motion Greg, second. Get a new ice machine that cartels before. All favor say aye. Likewise. Six, consider approved order granting discretionary exemption for LGC section two six two point zero two three for vehicle and equipment repairs. Mr. C, and uh. Let's see, discretionary exemption. Have you anything you want to add to this?
One of the, I'm not sure which O two three. What that discretionary exemptions for. Let me look it up real quick from fresh mind memory.
Apparently questioned me about the price of a repair I had and it exceeded the fifty thousand dollar mark. And he said he was putting this on there for that reason, although the item I was talking about is on the agenda.
Yeah, O two three doesn't contain it. So that's just the general requirement. I'm not sure what the thing is here. We'll deliver more information. Might have to table this for the, for the time being.
Make a motion to table.
Yeah, got a motion for Bruce, say Greg to table. All favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, for Mr. C, consider approved solicitation for autopsy transports and pumper barrels. We've been on this one for a while. We need to, we want to know that we had a workshop last week and we will have another workshop coming where all the funeral homes can come and visit and how we're gonna go forward this. County's growing. I'm just getting this first. And more people are unfortunately passing away. And more and more people that come into our county that don't have things or members of family here to properly bury that than we get the bills. And it, when it gets over fifty thousand dollars and we have to put out for this and we can retrieve past. So that's where we are. So this is a solicitation. That's not just giving permission to send out the autopsy transports and pumper burials. Anybody having a discussion, if so, please speak up. But I think we need to get this done so we can get, continue to pay our bills, but yet take care of the.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion for Bruce, say Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, for Ms. Chambers. Name Ms. Chambers. How's the, how's the classes going there?
I like she do.
Hang on. Classes, classes are fine. They're having them right across the hall over there. The heat here is unbearable. They're having record setting heat here in Waco, but we're enjoying it. Dilly and I are both enjoying it.
Well, no place I ever remember being hotter was College Station.
Probably so.
All right. Considered approved, this be your 2023 records restoration in archival plans. And y'all did take care of these old records quite well.
Yeah, it's, it's moving along. And with all the work we've been doing, the money's coming in at levels that we didn't even anticipate. So it's moving through pretty fast. We're making a lot of progress. But as the law states, you guys have to renew it and approve it every year. So we're up for, I guess, our third year of can we keep going and getting your permission?
Okay.
Motion approved, Dave.
Thank you. Motion Leon, say David, all favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, for Ms. Chambers, consider approved increase in county clerk fees for map plaque copies to five dollars per page for maps and plaques under twenty-eight inches and ten dollars per page for maps and plaques over twenty-eight inches. Fair enough.
Yes, as you know, we got our new machine and we can make, we can print those big plaques now. But the ink and the paper is much more expensive and it takes a little more time consuming to do. This is tied into the rest of my fees. None of my other fees are increasing. In fact, very few of our fees now are discretionary anymore. They're all dictated by law. The legislature keeps coming in and mandating that all the counties have, you know, the same fees across the board. But this is one where we do have discretion. And it's kind of tied, my fees are tied with Bobby's fees that come later. But this is the only change I am making to the fee schedule, barring any, you know, stuff that the legislature tells me to do for the next fiscal year.
See the court and what you approve. Motion for Bruce, say Greg to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number 10, don't go away yet, Lee.
Okay.
Okay, consider approved intern position for the remainder of the summer. The county clerk's office intern positions are paid through the county clerk records management fund. We've done this in the past and it's been very helpful.
Yeah, they're doing a great job this summer. They've gotten a lot of work done. We've got a bunch of these book covers and things coming in and we've got some last minute stuff we need to get done. So I think we weren't sure, Angela and I talked about it, we weren't sure if we had said two or if we just said interns, not to exceed some dollar amount. But this is all paid out of records management. But just to cover our behinds, we were gonna say, let's, can we up it to three? So it'd be like an intern for the last part of the summer to come in and help and get all these books cleaned up with the new covers.
I believe I had a motion from Leon started there. Is it correct?
Yeah.
You second.
Second.
Motion Leon, say David, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven.
Judge.
Yes.
Can I ask a question over there? Leon, could you clarify your motion for me? I didn't receive.
Okay, approve exactly what? One intern and then one dollar amount?
Well, when I go by what's said on the agenda, it's intern, not interns.
One intern.
Kim, we're adding, we currently have two. We're adding a third at the same amount. So she would be, or he would be paid twelve dollars an hour.
One additional, one additional to the.
One additional, yeah.
At twelve dollars per hour. And is there a maximum on that?
And when we talked about it, Lee, I don't think it was gonna increase your budget at all. I think you're just adding a body. So I don't think the dollars would have to change.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Budget.
All right, we all good?
Thank you.
You did. Good. Number eleven, for Ms. Bergman, consider approved four thousand dollars for district attorney special investigative fund for twenty spaces at a couple of dollars for active shooter training. And Bergman, you're here with us, I see.
Yes, sir. And we, we have allotted twenty spaces in that class. We may pay for less. We may pay for a couple of more, a couple more if there's some interested officers. But we wanted to, to let you guys know that we were doing that and get your approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce.
Second.
Say Greg to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's see. Number 12, for Ms. Bergman, consider approved the district attorney's office purchase of three 2022 escapes.
Yes, sir. So we were looking at adding to our fleet and we found these 22 escapes. They believe that there's going to be an increase in price, a significant increase in price for the 2023s. So instead of buying one or two, we're gonna go ahead and buy the third one that we located.
Motion to approve.
Say motion for Bruce, say Greg to approve. All favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 13, from Commission for Basket, consider approved quote from Everett. Um, what, I said it? One term.
And, and not the weapon. And our chip.
And our chip, chip spreader in the amount of fifty-eight thousand one hundred three dollars and four cents.
Now, this is what item six was referring to. Since we're over that amount, we have a discretionary exemption for repairs. If not, we would be bringing every repair that every commissioner had that's going to exceed the fifty thousand dollar mark. But he went in and put this on, this is on that chip spreader I bought from Missoria County three years ago for five thousand dollars. The computers and stuff need to be upgraded. And a new chip spreader is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So I figure I've got the money, fifty-eight thousand dollars. I have a new machine when it gets back.
Likewise.
I don't know, we can't.
Yeah, you might want to wait until we get the discretionary exemption issue lined up and to, or invested. If we could, I'm, I'm just not clear on what discretionary exemption it was for, you know, mechanic services. What, what do we talk about here?
Okay. We'll table this. You'll table this back here.
Yeah, I think until maybe we get purchasing here to, to explain what the thing is on. Yeah.
Change.
Okay. I'm trying to throw wrench into things. I just, you know, we, we're gonna make sure we've had the exemption for discretionary.
Yeah. All right, David made motion, David Leon made it second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. At motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number 14, citizen approved recommended service fees for 2023. Chair Rader.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chapman called surrounding counties, sent emails to all the constables to ask about the fees. And we thought they're all within reasons. We asked no changes. We ran it by Ms. Chambers and she agreed. So that's the approval. Also, I had a concern about the escapes for the district attorney's office, but I guess it's better than a ram. It kind of saves civil liability, I guess, so.
Only left the word escape, okay?
There you have it, escaped and ram, correct.
Okay, entertain the motion. Motion for Leon, second, Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries, thank you, Chair. Number 15, permit inspections from Mr. Douglas's department, considered approved pay request number seven for Gulf Coast Materials, the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand six hundred twelve dollars seventy-two cents. And Victoria, I see you're at your words today.
I am.
With LJ, if you could come up rather so we can hear you both, please.
All right. So this pay request is for the project related to the GLA Harvey Infrastructure. This is their request number seven from Gulf Coast completing out their portion of the contract, but it's still holding on to 10% retention. That amount is two hundred seventeen hundred thousand six hundred twelve dollars, six hundred and twelve and seventy-two cents.
What project is this?
This is the Harvey Infrastructure project.
Okay.
This is all, right.
Same again?
This is all funds from the, that right?
Yes, um, this is funded for the GLA with, I believe, some injections from local funds for your, yeah, for your.
So this project's.
It was, it included everyone's precincts, yes. But Gulf Coast worked in precincts one, two, and four.
Okay.
Second.
Motion Greg, second, Bruce to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise. Thank you. Okay, Victoria, one more.
Yes.
Consent number 16, consider approved the change order request number six for the Gulf Coast materials contract number twenty dash zero six five, dash zero nine five, dash C two six four. This is to reconcile workouts and field work and will reduce the contract in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Yes, same project. This is change order number six. This essentially reduces all quantities that were not used in the project. We are reconciling quantities to get a hundred percent and that reduces the contract by twenty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars. The change order also increases Gulf Coast's contract by 30 days. We had to extend it so that they could finish out the rest of the roads without being hit with the grade dangers.
Thanks, motion approved.
Motion Leon.
Second.
Say David, all favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Victoria. Appreciate you, yeah. Number 17, from County Attorney, Mr. Poston, considering approved purchase of tasers for mental health officers with majority funding from award from the Shane's Dipwaller Fund. We've been working on this a little while.
Yes.
Kind of got, I think, back to the right square.
Yes.
Check on. And yes, they do need these.
It's, it provides an alternative way of gaining compliance from folks. It's non-deadly. It's not had the same problems that the pepper ball or pepper, pepper spray has. So yes, we, we very much ask for approval.
Motion David, say Leon to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number 18, for Mr. Poston, consider approved destination of Ms. Harris as a signatory on Prosperity Bank wire transfer agreement. Just reno, let's move it.
Yes, we, I think we approved the wire transfer agreement at a time or two before this. Prosperity Bank came back and said, well, Jay signed the agreement. So that means Jay's gonna have to sign off on all the transfers. And so he would ask, I think it would be more efficient getting Ms. Harris to sign.
Oh, have to. Make a motion to approve.
Bruce, say Greg to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Of course.
Uh, number 19, for Ms. Harris, considering approved issuing a down payment of six thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars to A1 Telecom, the treasurer's office security system. The remaining four thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars will be issued upon completion for a total of ten thousand six hundred thirty dollars. The monthly monitoring service agreement will be forty-nine dollars per month. Security system purchase, installation, and monthly service agreement approved during Commission Court held six fourteen twenty-two. Now.
So this is back on the agenda, just to spell out the exact amounts of all of the payments that will be upcoming. And also to determine where the funds will come from.
Um, my, first of all, my apologies for not being here the fourth. Um, my, first of all, my apologies for not being here the fourteen, uh, while this was on the agenda. But my question is, have we had anybody from law enforcement actually look over these plans to see if they're, instead of just having Matt say, okay, this is what you need? Is this something that we've looked at with, with, well, even Mr. Wilson, Arthur, Chair, somebody that's?
I have not had law enforcement look at it, no.
Is there a necessity for that, Ms. Cam?
Um. It wouldn't hurt, and I mean, we can have, you know, somebody from the county review it. If, you know, if that loses court, um, I'm happy to do that. And so the system will be, uh, cameras so that we can see who's at the door and a buzzer system so that we can, you know, let folks in who we, you know.
These officers are getting another door.
Yes.
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 Like a steel door.
Maybe a steel door.
Sometimes I can use one.
I'm sure the Chair for that somebody look at.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why, you know, it, it's.
Wait, what? What is this one?
This is a great idea, I mean, I, I, I'm all for it, but I'm just.
Make sure everything's covered.
Correct.
You know, we got the Texas Ranger over there, if I hope. Yes, I don't mind looking at it, I'm pretty handy to have those.
Yeah.
Yeah. We work with table and a lot of stuff like this.
So, motion David, say Greg to approve, all three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, thanks. Yeah, I'm pretty sure we don't have a problem getting that door.
Okay, we'll push back with that.
Yeah.
And not sure about the location of the funds on departmental.
Special projects, we're gonna do that too. Where maybe.
Thank you.
That much. Yeah. Okay. Uh, number twenty from, uh, Gospel Halsey, and Gospel, thank you for being here today. Uh, consider approved new school resource officer.
Everyone over there in front.
Yeah. Everybody wants to see. Uh, resource officer for the Holiday City Elementary School. Holiday City, ISD fills with increased machines and threats, major schools that need, they have a security level.
Uh, well, they, they voted on it, the school board did, and they've asked that we make the request of the county. Their buildings are separated, not one building, and they feel the only way to safely secure the children and staff is to have an officer on, on the campus. Entering the contract as.
Yes.
One or they have two, because it said you, it was why before the.
One is the high school, that's the point, other campus, okay?
We covered with the contracts, whenever we get this done.
So, everybody, this is all a big one, contract is doing.
For two.
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm.
Make a motion to.
Motion Leon, say David, all three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, thanks. Twenty-one, uh.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
If we could revisit the thirteen, eight thirteen and eight six on the, uh, uh, discretionary exemption. What, how did they figure out, uh, where the safe was that section size should have been the two six two oh two four, which contains, uh, you know, a laundry list exemptions, including, uh, vehicle equipment repairs. So, that is a discretionary exemption as long as Commissioner's Court orders the exemption, then you're good on vehicle equipment repairs. So if y'all would like, uh, I have any problems, proceed on that.
Number one.
Number six and thirteen.
Six and thirteen, so, six, it should be, that, the, a proper motion would be to grant a discretionary exemption for LVC section two six zero two four, uh, for the vehicle and equipment repairs, thank you.
It's, um, A eleven.
A eleven.
Which requires an order.
Okay, we need to go back on number six and, uh, resend that vote, correct?
Yes, yes.
Need a motion to resend?
Motion to resend, item six, say.
Bruce, lay the motion. All right, make the second, resend, all three say aye. Likewise, guys.
Make a motion to approve, item six.
Bruce, you're getting ahead of me and I'm on a delay. Who approved the motion to resend?
Uh.
I heard Bruce and then who?
Greg made the second.
Bruce and Greg, okay. So, the motion to grant the discretionary exemption, who did that one?
Okay, we're, we're just not getting there, good.
Okay, sorry.
So now we need a motion to.
I got motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce.
And that motion is to, so we're in the discretionary exemption for vehicle equipment repairs, correct?
Yes. All right, two granted. All right, we got that. All three say aye. Likewise, thanks. Motion carries. Now, it's from thirteen. In same situation, correct, Matthew?
That's correct, yeah, we're sending.
Make a motion to resend, item thirteen, say.
Motion for Bruce, second, Greg to resend. All three say aye. Likewise, thanks. That motion carries, now need a motion to approve.
Approve.
Second, Greg, second, Leon to approve. Say aye. Likewise, thanks. Motion carries, thank you.
That's one, we're going with that, we'll go back to one other on the consent agenda, just for details. And number seven, point six, the last round on the payroll items. Consider them free to pay down on time for seventy-five, four and forty-three threshold below two hundred and forty hours as required. The threshold is right at two hundred and forty hours, so we need to pay her down in the name of the court's, um, direction as to how far down the two, below the two forty, like, to.
We can go on, like, uh, share the two hundred with you.
I don't, yeah. See.
Yeah. Things, that's been two hundred, we've had practice in the past. Uh, you want to go two hundred, go down to one hundred.
I don't give a court.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like everybody else, zebra, it's possible.
So two hundred?
We need to go back, Matthew.
Yeah, we might be.
Might as well, yeah, yeah.
I'll say we split it, let's, 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 let's go to one forty.
Okay, I'm doing that.
Down to what?
One twenty. Just remember, you do that there, you can't do it elsewhere. All right, now, need to go back to consent agenda and resend, approve consent agenda.
Perhaps amend.
Amend, yeah. Um, Bruce, you made the motion to approve, Greg made the motion second. Consent agenda. Do you want to amend your motion?
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm. I'll, I'll make a motion to amend. A motion to accept the additions and also pay down to a hundred and twenty on item six, the pay pressure.
Second, all right. Motion, and then second, motion for Greg, all three say aye. Likewise, thank you, Jim. Yes. Number twenty-one, consider approved salaries allowances for elected officials. It takes, this year, twenty twenty-three, present section five two point zero point three, other things, look, whether to. It's, and I'll receive yours. He's. I'll take a look over. Do you have any discussion, now it's time to discuss.
I'm gonna approve.
Let a motion. And ask you under what, Jim?
I'm having to consult, of course, um, uh, is it also to, um, discuss any particular, uh, folks on there or is it in total?
Both.
Folks, okay.
For us to do that, Greg would have to rescind his motion, he already made the motion, Jim.
Yeah, we're just discussing that, yeah, we'll have a second anyway. It, uh. I can't talk about the entirety.
Yeah, but y'all can consult me, uh, if you have, uh, specific questions, yeah.
Okay. All right, under five five one point.
Oh, seven one.
Oh, seven one. Ten. Got a motion to executive session under five five one zero seven one, second.
Jay?
Hey.
You're go, you're gonna go into executive session in that same area next anyway, you're gonna just do both together?
We're about to go into executive session on nine point one. You know, so she's asking if we just want to go, go ahead and take care of both of those and then come back and deal with.
We can, yeah, y'all just can vote, since, uh.
So Leon would need to amend his motion to go into executive session on twenty-one and nine point one to consult with the attorney under five five one oh seven one, something like that.
As long as I got a reason, that's all that matters. And let's be spelled out clearly. Okay, so I got a motion to go into executive session.
And under consultation with attorney for both of those items, yes.
Now, what are we gonna discuss in the executive session?
Uh, so both.
On, on the salary?
Yeah, both salary and, and nine point one, the possible claim for reimbursement against the C I D number one.
Well, what about, what are all the salaries, can we discuss and we can't discuss?
Uh, on salaries, you can consult me, uh, and ask any questions, which I would be required to, you know, secret under professional ethics.
I got a motion. You say. Yeah, look, yeah, same thing, all three say aye. Likewise, thanks. I want to vote out, I want to go into this, get this cleared up, yeah, time to listen. Here.
Okay.
So it is now. In. Forty-six. No, nine forty-six. Moving. All right, it's ten fifty, roughly. And we're out of executive session. There was one item, uh, discuss possible claim for reimbursement against the C I D one for emergency repairs. The action would be to take no action.
You know, to take no action, say.
All three will take no action. Likewise, thanks. Motion carries, Greg and Bruce. We're driving, once, uh, discussion there, attorney. Concerning. Salaries for elected officials.
And, yeah, so, yeah, getting, getting our advice on what I know regarding them, and I think it's just left to the court to, uh, set the salaries to determine what they think is appropriate.
Well, I do have a salary sheet that we prepared previous two quarters ago. And there were some issues that came up concerning potential grievances. And I believe that we discussed that with you. And, uh, of course, in this next, uh, salaries allowance for elected officials, we're back and revised the salaries to where all of the commissioners, district clerk, county clerk, county treasurer, tax collector, and myself are all set at the same salary. Even, everybody's equal. The only difference would be, uh, the auto allowance, which the commissioners and myself get, along with the sheriff. But of course, the sheriff's salary is higher than ours, but that was based on an increase of five percent across the board, which is what everybody got. Uh, elected officials. The commissioners did receive greater than five percent. Based on last year, they did not receive twelve percent increase like everybody else did. That's one thing that we make a mistake doing, guys. Everybody must raise, we don't take. So I know our first raise since two thousand eight was in twenty sixteen. Our second raise for Commissioner's Court was in twenty nineteen. And here would be twenty twenty-three. And we're looking at the potential for, once again, everyone out in that's elected official to receive some compensation above what their previous year was. I still look at the, uh, being as congruent across the board as I can on what percentages are. Now, with that being said. I received our certified tax rule. Paid for yesterday. No, yesterday. Um, I still don't know what our revenues will be this year. Those we have yet to receive, and I'm, brethren, if I'm not mistaken, you haven't received the, uh, extension yet from.
There's some security, we haven't, we're ready to go, but we're still gathering information.
So we're always in that little particular niche where we don't know how much we're gonna get. We have to set a tax rate somewhere between what used to be called effective rate, which is now called the no new revenue rate, and what used to be called the rollback rate, which is now called voter approval rate. And Lord knows, I never want to go over that, okay?
Yeah.
So, historically, we've always kind of landed somewhere in the middle. I remember two years ago, our tax rate was point five seven eight eight, today it is point five five eight four. So it went down. What's my anticipation this year? Based on the growth in the county and based on, uh, the appraisals, especially and on new, new growth. You know, I anticipate we're gonna probably, it's potentially we could go down again, I don't know. I don't have the computations in from the comptroller. If y'all understand how that works. The legislature is the body, governing body of everything. They're the ones that make policy. The comptroller enforces policy. It goes down to the CAD. The CAD does the appraisals based on instructions from the comptroller, and we get the leftovers. That's it. It's the best way I can put it. And it, uh, regardless, we're still the cheapest act in town. Look at your cities and your ISDs, we're still lower than all of us. So, that's just all I'm saying. You do what you want to. Uh, consider the potential, uh, there. If you have any differences in what is proposed today in salaries, they can grow percentage-wise, and especially with the, uh, just the fees and costables as well, being at five percent. Then you have a risk, that's all I'm gonna say. I think this has been very clear. Any further discussion?
After looking at the last one we came in here in court with, I was not in favor of it at all. I felt that it was. And just. And it's quite a bit of race to taxpayers. It's you and I more in favor of far. And I would even go as far to make the motion to approve this new salary. Second.
Motion to second, infer the discussion, and please feel free to discuss.
I like motion for first.
You what?
Well, we got a motion to approve, we got a second. We'll make another, that's fine. I can use all the motions I can get today. Uh, all right, we have a motion and a second to approve this salary structure for elected officials for the, uh, twenty twenty-three budget. All three say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, thanks.
Aye.
All right, let's record show that, uh, we have three ayes and one nay, and that measure goes pass. Any further, this is for the court today. Very further, this is for the court today.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all favor say aye.